Hey, Jason.
How's your sound?
Good morning.
Good morning.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Steve, are you still in Tennessee?
No, I'm on the road heading home in the hotel room. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Hey, I saw you had a lot of snow and weather yesterday and last night, huh?
Checking microphone.
Yeah, we had thunder snow last night, Steve.
I saw that thunder snow.
Thunder, snow and sleet.
My driveway is a sheet of ice right now, and I'm over on dark.
I bet it is.
I'm gonna share with you.
Check one, two, check. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes, sir. Good.
Can you hear us?
Can anyone hear me? I don't have audio.
Oh, you don't have audio?
All right, how about now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I couldn't hear you guys then. I couldn't hear you, and then you couldn't hear me. What time we got? Eight thirty. We got everybody. Terry, Steve. And in my screen.
Charles just came on.
Charles is here. All right, that's a forum. It's eight thirty. Let's roll. I hereby call the strategic planning meeting session number two-two order. Let's start with a roll. All attendance, please. Christie.
Director Grace.
Here.
Director Jensen.
Here.
Director Quinn.
Here.
Vice President Roberts.
Here.
President Han.
I am here as well. Could we stand for a pledge of allegiance, please? And we got a flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well done. And public comments on non-agenda items, if you would, please, Christie.
Members of the public may address the board on matters not listed on this agenda. The board cannot take action on any item that is not on the agenda. The board or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, or may ask questions for clarification. I do not have any hands up.
Item six, information and discussion items. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Patrick Ebbara here, or would Bill like to open again?
Not necessarily, Mr. President. I think we we kind of got the hang of it, so I would let Patrick lead off.
Right, so we left off at the end of number seven. I hope everyone's done their homework. I'll turn it over to Patrick. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you, President Han, and good morning, everyone. I hope everybody's doing well and healthy, and you and your families are healthy as well. Look forward to spending the balance of this morning with you. We've had just a slight change to the schedule, starting at eight thirty instead of nine, which we originally put on the calendar, so I appreciate your accommodation, starting just slightly earlier. The intent is to be wrapped up by eleven thirty. We'll take a mid-morning break, as I mentioned, as we did last week as well. Today, I want to cover some of the, kind of recap what we covered last week, and then move forward with the mission and vision. Bill's gonna do a review of the survey, kind of the relevancy of how you, how he perceives content that was produced in that survey that can help the board determine which priorities to move forward sooner, faster on, if you will. And then the bulk of this morning is going to be where we're going to be having a conversation around what are those priorities in the near term, short term, and trying to create some level of cohesion and clarity for the board, so there's an alignment of expectations and priorities between the board and Bill and his staff. And then Bill's gonna take, partnering with his staff, depending on what's produced today, he'll be working with his staff to take that straw man of a strategic plan, if you will, and put some more meat on the bone, some more details, some more description, and then bring that back to the board for consideration at a future date. So you'll get another bite of the apple. We're trying to stay at the policy level here today, somewhat operational, I totally understand that. We just don't want to do project planning today, where we're getting down to the mechanics of the execution. So trying to focus on the what, obviously touch on a little bit of the how. I think that's helpful for Bill and the staff to get a sense from the board about how they see this playing out, but primarily on the what. So I'm gonna share my screen, if I might here. And just to do a recap. And let me just reconfigure, whoops, reconfigure my screen. Here with the two monitors. And I put on the on the screen, the benefits, this should look familiar, but I thought it would be beneficial, since we've had a little time pass between last session and today. Just to recap, what you'd shared, as you thought, the benefits from effective district operations, essentially the outcomes you're trying to accomplish, in no particular order, essentially the order that you shared with me, was unity in the community. There's a shared understanding about what you're accomplishing on their behalf, a safe environment, again, another outcome by the execution of the police department and other partners as well, that when not hearing dissatisfaction with the public, so that notion of passive approval. On the flip side of that, citizen satisfaction, that was identified both antecdotally through conversations or formally through the survey, the financial sustainability, which is one of the obligations you have to members of the district, trying to remain viable. There was also an action about correcting the forest, up elevation, returning to the green forest, that notion, so mitigating environmental impacts, that when we're effective, we can do more. So in some respects, when you're able to accomplish more on the behalf of your members, it increases your capacity to do more on their behalf. It's sort of success begets success. The community building, leaving the community better than I, we found it regarding landscaping, gate operations, maintenance, et cetera. So many of the opportunities you have as board members, in sort of the macro, as well as the micro sense of just trying to improve the quality of life for members, and that notion, virtue, really of leaving the place better than you found it, the place meaning that your impact, when you step away from public office. And I think that also applies to Bill and the staff, that that's often a sense, a source of satisfaction for them and the role they play in every day, on an everyday basis, trying to help make sure the community is always evolving towards a better future. Building public trust, which again, leaders traffic in trust, trying to instill faith in your members and the judgment that they, that you have on their behalf. No unpleasant surprises, so that perceptual acuity, looking around that, the next corner, making sure you're trying to anticipate potential impacts and potential trends. Staff morale, which is more internal, although it's affected by external forces, and morale is an outcome constructed of many different variables, but how they feel about the work they do, some of that comes from not only the economic side, but also the advocacy and support by their manager, the directors, and how they're perceived by the board members, as well as how they're perceived by community members. The comfortable feeling for residents, overall better quality of life, just that they have that peace of mind when they wake up, that they know that they're living in a community that cares about them, that they care about the community and neighbors, and they're all moving in, not the same, but in a similar direction. That stability, which again, is an outcome, difficult to do sometimes, when there's so much dynamic disruption, sometimes it's percolating literally below the ground, other times it's coming fast and furious, but trying to make sure that stability is not mean the same as keeping things as they are. And then finally was the interaction with the public. Some people see the Bear Valley as a sanctuary, it's sort of an escape to a respite, if you will, for people, but that also that notion that you need their involvement. Some people are more more active than others, but how you enlist people in the improving the quality of life on their behalf in the community they choose to live in. So that was just a recap. Hopefully, that that kind of gives you a sense, again, of a little bit of direction as we, as we start to explore the objectives for today. And then I'm not going to go through all this. Obviously, we did that last week, but about strategic planning and being good board members. Bill gave an extensive update. We also talked about the headwinds, and these were the comments that you had about the headwinds, as I call them, the trends impacting members, district operations, so many different elements. I talked about widows and widowers, people that are on fixed income, sole, sort of living alone, and how the cost of living in the district is, it may start to increase, and how do you reconcile that with both people that have lived there a long time, as well as people that are moving in? Maybe your your demographics are starting to possibly become more diverse, socioeconomically. The second one, the notion of investment that you're trying to, as you run, operate some of these facilities and operations, that you're trying to make sure that you're investing in that, and that can is a bit of a struggle, because literally you're doing things below the ground, and people don't always notice that. And so trying to help them, your members, understand that your opportunity, in some respects, your obligation to continually reinvest in both physical infrastructure and some respects, social infrastructure. There's a little discussion there about property values, that property values are not just based on, you know, the cost, I'm sorry, that property values are not just based on the last house sold, it's also based on amenities in the district, in the community, that are impacted by the investments you make on their behalf, sort of that social good, if you will, that people otherwise couldn't achieve on their own. There's also discussion about service delivery, trying to continually communicate your message to your members about the impact you're having, the quality, the content of the services, the roles, the role and rise of social media, not that everybody's on there, but it is a dimension that's in some jurisdictions more than others, just as a place for people to converse, sometimes advocate, sometimes kind of steer, public policy debates. Bill shared many of these statistics, hopefully I got them correct, about, from what the survey was shared. Some of this probably is not surprising to you, some of the data points may be eighty percent of residents were over fifty-five, fifty-four percent were retired, forty-nine percent of the residents have incomes greater than a hundred thousand, ninety-six, ninety-six percent of residents, again, that responded to the survey, have some kind of internet, and I believe the response rate in the survey was forty-five percent of members, if I recall, that there is still a role for email and snail mail. People get their sources of information from different, pardon me, different sources, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent of residents have children living with them, and I don't recall if that, I don't think that was differentiated between about how old the children were. How do we provide services and how we communicate? Again, you had a good discussion last week about just what you're doing, how you're doing it, and that communication, and you talked about the advancement, the last couple of years, making that a higher priority, trying to reach out to people, kind of tell them, tell them what you told them, and tell them again, that notion of social marketing. There was also a conversation about COVID, the impact on service delivery, the state orders, sort of what you're trying to do to mitigate some of that, obviously, we're, maybe we're starting to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, depends on kind of where you live, and the policies advocated by elected officials, but that also the notion, Bill talked about this, about when that happened and the stay-at-home orders, and some people were working from home, some people still are, does that start to change the operation of the district offices, as far as that notion of Monday through Friday, eight to five, does that start to shift how you're providing services physically and online? And I would say, you know, as most jurisdictions, really, public-private sector organizations, they're all going through that transition to say, who can work from home, what's that impact on our people actually physically walking in? So, but those impacts, there was also the the sharing of the rank number two in the nation about the place to live, place to live to, for those people that work from home, so that's that's quite a feather in your cap. Then there was more information about the social media, and finally about the regulatory environment, from the federal, state, and county. When you operate water and wastewater systems, obviously you're subject to federal and state requirements, increasing the compliance rates, those federal and state authorities never decrease them, they're always increasing them, so there's more to do to meet certain standards, higher performance standards, all those water quality standards, wastewater treatment standards, and all that that's happening, that kind of that notion of the unfunded mandates, which has sort of lost its, lost its appeal in the jargon anymore, but I think it's going to start coming back for the vernacular. Then there was a discussion about the possible state legislation, something being considered in Sacramento regarding public meetings and being in person, they may require that simulcast online, I believe President Han, you spoke about that just briefly, and then the impact from wildfires and impact on insurance premiums for, for obviously for all of you as homeowners, and then the construction of new homes, that balance between encouraging growth, residential development, and then balancing that with the water supply, and how do those two intersect? So the the conversation around trends was not to fix them, per se, it was to acknowledge them, there are opportunities within those trends, there's also constraints to be conscious of, because sometimes those constraints can be a real straitjacket to your ability to impact those issues, not just financially, but operationally, legislatively. So I just wanted to do a quick recap, kind of run through all that, to refresh everyone's memory from the discussion you had last week. Hopefully, I captured everything, at least the gist of it. Today, what we want to do is talk about the mission and vision. And ask you to do a little bit of homework about the mission and vision. Hopefully, people didn't have to cram last night and do their homework, but had got a chance to, and you know, mission and vision are helpful, they're they're kind of guideposts. A lot of jurisdictions spend time reviewing them, refreshing them, reaffirming them. We thought we, what would be beneficial for the board is to simply kind of scrub it a little bit and say, does this still reflect the appetite and attitude of the five of you? Do you think it's still relevant? Is it still, pardon me, powerful enough, inspirational enough? To give lift to what you're trying to do on the members' behalf. So curious to know just your, and we didn't envision having a wordsmith today, you know, if there's a desire by the board that you want to have some serious revisit revisions of this, I would say that that's a process for another time, where you may want to also engage members of the district that live there about the mission and vision, but we wanted to make sure that we had a conversation, just allow you to scrub it, and maybe just tweak it, maybe here and there, but have a conversation about it. So I'm going to turn it back over to you about the mission. What do you think? Is it relevant? Is it helpful? Is it interesting? Is it powerful enough? If everyone's to jump it.
I think it is accurate. It's not super powerful. It doesn't inspire. I had three tweets that you said we weren't really gonna go over, but I was thinking we could probably find a better adjective than high quality, something more impactful, or, you know, like wow, and I thought safe should come first. I think safety is paramount, and if we can add something relating to transparency and make that part of our mission as well, those are my three comments.
Okay. All right, thank you, President Han.
I just want to comment on the mission statement. When this was drafted, it probably was very accurate, not so much now. Cost-effective is a issue in that in the past. Your things were, you know, your can was kicked down the road, and now the cost effectiveness is getting to a point where it's, it's a hardship on many of the families, particularly the sewer rates, because there's only about four hundred and eighty customers to provide, you know, the cost for the sewer, you know, there was a great increase, and that was, you know, that was the right thing to do, but the point is that, you know, if you only have four hundred and eighty, I mean, that, you know, they have to share the, you know, the cost of all of it, so. You know, just to comment, the cost effectiveness now, you know, was appropriate years ago and not necessarily correct now.
Okay. Thank you. Other thoughts about the the mission? Remember, the mission is to guide your decision-making, to give you some focus. The vision is where you're going, the mission is how you get there. I'm sorry.
Patrick, if I was gonna, and I'm not saying to change it, but if I was gonna add or or tweak it a bit. It should probably also speak to sustainability, and I don't mean that in the environmental sense, but but just the the idea that we are always on a path to look, you know, twenty years, fifty years even, in the in the future, we just celebrated fifty years as a community, and a lot of the discussion recently has been about, you know, we're not in a good place in terms of being able to to continue to provide the services that were mandated to do. So whether whether this was a wordsmith to add something about perpetuity, or just to say sustainable, I think that that might be something to to add, and again, I'm not advocating a change to the to the statement, per se, but but just something to add to the list.
Okay. And what I'm taking some notes here, so this is something that Bill and I can go back and maybe offer a couple of alternative versions for you to scrub at a future time, write some minor tweaks, and I think that's that's totally cool. We want to make sure that you find this as a source of guidance in the decisions you make, not solely, obviously, you exercise your own judgment, but the power of a mission is to offer a some a reference point, a touch point. So other thoughts about the mission statement?
I have a couple.
Sure.
In in, you know, how it maybe applies to mission versus vision, but, you know, I think it's good if the mission statement and the vision statement, but focus on the mission now, can be articulated by and remembered and shared by our employees. So I I remember a company that had a very simple, but I think effective mission statement, that they then were able to, you know, put into a button that, when asked, the employee could say, ah, well, here's what this means. And and as I look at this, you know, there's a, there's a lot of verbiage, but I think of the terms excellent, efficient, environment, as, and then you, and then you get to have some fun with it, so you could make it an E cubed pin. What's that mean? Well, it means we do what we do with excellence and efficiency and care for the environment, as an example. So I think of that, and it comes back to me when when this process is going on, is involving our organization and our employees as well, and they can carry that out into our community and remind everyone what we do, how we do it.
Okay. Yeah, I make points that Bill made. Thank you so much, Bill. The mission statement, if people can't remember it, then its influence is is not as impactful. If it's too long, if it's kind of a check the box, and I've seen that in jurisdictions before, where it's all the adjectives, it's it's a little bit of mom and apple pie, and then if it's not memorable and easy to recite or reference, then sometimes the impact is not as significant as if something that's concise, clear, and compelling. So I just offer that as a point of view. Other thoughts about the mission?
I would just add two, two things there, and I think if if local government is going to be anything, it should be responsive and accountable, and. A mission statement should include that.
Okay.
Or express that in some way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Well, understanding that these adjectives can be understood in an expansive manner, my vote would be to leave it as is. I think it covers a lot of territory.
Okay.
If Director Grace and Vice President Roberts, were you guys kind of touching on the same thing, like, because Steve grabbed onto cost-effective, and so did John, if that was fiscally sustainable, was that what the two of you were kind of saying?
Well, yeah, that's what, basically what I'm saying is, is that, you know, the mission's statement was was good in the past, but maybe not so true now. I mean, if we're saying cost-effective to the people now, they're going to say, well, that's malarkey. I mean, you've raised everything already. So, you know, so it's, you know, we need to have a mission, you know, statement that is more in tune with today and not yesteryear. And that's all I was saying is, is, you know, if we're saying cost-effective, that's just not true right now, you know, and so we need to modify that to, and I kind of like what Bill said about excellence and and those kinds of things, because then you can, you know, you can talk about that, but if you say cost-effective to your neighbor, which, which, by the way, I have, particularly with the sewer rates in the community that I live in, you know, your people are irate over the cost, particularly the single people that only have your single income like social security, you know, they're feeling it severely, and so, you know, this mission statement in that respect is not accurate.
And I would just add, I think certainly from a long-term sustainability, and maybe sustainability is not the right word, because it is so overused kind of in our culture, but the concept of long-term manageable. Infrastructure, services, equipment, just being in a place today that we know how we're going to pay for this, the same level of services or better twenty years from now. So cost-effective is certainly a component, but but it goes beyond that, I would say.
Sure. I agree.
Let me offer this to you. We could, one could infer from when you say providing high quality, and I know that President Han mentioned that it's possibly maybe a changing of that word, but you, a reader could infer from that, high quality means that you're making smart investments on behalf of the residents to ensure that is an outcome. I'm just offering that as a perspective, right?
In that regard, it definitely, the two definitely dovetail, because we need to restore competence, and this is what Steve, I believe, is saying, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we want to restore competence in the residents that we serve, that every decision we make, certainly from a cost standpoint, has value, is an investment in in their livability in the community, and is going to set us up that they're not going to have to worry about this, you know, three years from now, that we're going to be coming back to the well for additional costs. So I think that's what you were, what you were getting at, Patrick.
Yes.
Right, and if we want to apply high quality to the status of our roads at the moment, we're probably falling a bit short.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Christie, I see you have your hand up.
I thank you. I was just wondering about when the discussion about cost-effective, I don't. Is that being confused with low cost? Because that's a different thing. We're not providing low-cost services because our services are expensive to provide, so maybe the cost-effective is just confusing, but fiscally responsible, or something like that, rather than. Because they're not low cost, and. That's all I have.
Okay.
I think that's a good point, Christie. We have, it costs what it costs, and we do our best to keep that as minimal as possible, but when it comes to the end of the day, if we don't get the residents to pay for these services, we don't have the services. And if half of the people are making more than a hundred grand, that that puts us in a little bit different tier. I happened to look up the Census Bureau statistics on income levels for the Tehachapi area, and household average is fifty, and the individual average is twenty-seven thousand, so we're well above that average. We, people, half the people would have to make two thousand dollars a year to bring a hundred down to the average of fifty-four, so. Right, to the point. Back to you guys.
Yeah, it's something to think about, too. I think that is somewhat elusive. It's a little bit of running down rabbit holes, and I know you have to be conscious of this, totally, I'm not naive. When the cost is associated with government, I think it just reminds people that they want it to be low cost, and I'm not sure, so pardon me for, I'm offering this, but I don't think necessarily people move to the Bear Valley because of, it's the low cost of living. They move there for the value of living there. And I think that's just a different way to look at it. There is a value of living there, not just about their property values, but the experience, the quality of life, the amenities, access, I mean, there's all sorts of different things that people move there for, and I'm just offering that as something to consider, the value, and what I would see as the board and the district as a provider, you're trying to enhance the value of their life, whether it's through investing in the roads, ensuring a stable and reliable water supply, ensuring an adequate sewer system, you know, all those other dimensions of things that you offer. I'm not trying to muddy the water here, no pun intended, but just trying to, looking at that through the different lens about the value, because I think when we talk about cost, I think it just reinforces the notion, reminds people, they already know that, but, you know, there's a cost associated with it. But I think when you start to at least expand it to what Director Quinn talked about, you know, the, if there's a way to interpret or expand the terms here, maybe that's where you start having that conversation about the value. Again, I'm just trying to offer a perspective as you look at that, not trying to reword it, but just trying to offer that, the mission is trying to reinforce the value that you're charged with delivering, which is improving their quality of life, enhancing property values. which is improving their quality of life, enhancing property values, all that good stuff. Other thoughts about the mission? Well, if it's all right with the board, what I'd like to do is just Bill and I took some notes. I'm sure he did too. Go back and maybe just tweak it a little bit and offer some alternative versions for you all to consider at a future meeting, not major revisits. Doesn't seem like it, but a few tweaks here and there. Seems like you're close. This is rather emblematic of where you want to take the, the, the organization and the community, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
Sure. All right. And I appreciate your input on that. And now let me move on to the vision. The vision statements usually, whoops, I'm sorry. And this is a little bit unorthodox, but visions are really destinations you never achieve. They're sort of a magnet there to draw out the best. It's more about, you know, missions are usually plumbing. Visions are usually poetry, if I can make that distinction. I'm just offering that. So of the vision, the Bear Valley Community Services District's Board of Directors and Staff will team together to effectively fulfill the district's mission statement. The district will not only provide basic services, but will continue to improve upon those services and look to additional services to enhance the lives of district residents. This will be accomplished through thoughtful planning, innovation and technology. So thoughts about the vision?
Don't say where we want to go or what we want to be. So as an example, I would suggest we want to be the premier residential community in Kern County. Something like that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Bill. Other thoughts about the vision?
I, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't see that Bill's prospective vision is measurable. And how are you possibly going to do this unless property values shoot through the roof? I, I, I just don't see that as a measurable.
Okay, there, there was someone else, I think. Director Jensen, you go ahead.
I, I think opening the vision statement, saying that you're going to live by the mission statement is kind of unnecessary and a little bit foolish. And, and I agree with Bill. It, it should say, what do you want for this community? What, what is the vision for the community? What do you want it to look like in five years and 10 years, in 20 years? Do you want it to retain its, its rural value? Do you want it to be a place where retirees and families alike can live, you know, in, in happiness and, and away from heavy development of the city? Though, those are the things I, I would look for in a vision of, of what do you want it to look like in, in five, 10, 20 years? Not, how are you going to get there? As, as far as the, the rest of it goes, looking to additional services to enhance the lives of district residents. That just reads to me, you know, sorry, but it reads to me like, yeah, we're going to look for new ways to tax you and, and new things to charge your fees on. You know, kind of like the RFID tags where we paid taxes for something and now we're going to charge you for it as well. So I, I don't think that belongs in the vision statement as well.
Okay. Thank you, Director Jensen. Other thoughts about the vision?
Sure. Go ahead, Terry, go.
Patrick said the vision is the place that you want to go, but never get there. Reminded of the word kaizen, which means continuous improvement in Japanese culture. It's really what we want is continuous improvement, not that we'll arrive someplace.
Okay. And the Spanish version is mejorando. So just to offer that. Thank you. I think President Han, you had something? Thanks.
Well, I'll second what Terry just said about the continuous improvement. On the first comment he made was about it being measurable. I'm not sure it's measurable. It might be more subjective, which is okay. And then we're constantly seeking to achieve that excellence. I like the RFID. I think that is a expansion of services, just like it says, look to improve upon those services, the gate. We've improved upon the gate. You no longer have to sit behind a guest trying to enter Bear Valley Springs. You can zip right around, don't have to wait in the line. I, I think that's one of those additional services. And for a buck a month, I, I don't see how that's a, a tax, but we have to find a way to pay for it. So a buck a month pays for that service. So I, I would, I like those kind of things to improve the quality of life here.
Okay.
Just, Patrick, I think I, I would agree with Bill. I think there needs to be some reference in our vision to, to excellence and top quality. I think that's what the community deserves. That's what we all moved here anticipating and, and striving for. I might respectfully disagree somewhat with Terry on the measurability. I think, I mean, we did just take a survey and, and simply asking the residents, you know, how do you feel about your community? Is it, is it excellent? Is it mediocre? Is it okay? I think, and it is, as, as President Han mentioned, it is also subjective. So everybody has their own, whether it's, you know, seeing the elk on the side of the road, whether it's high property values, whether it's clean water, they all have different, we all have different opinions of what that means. But I do, I do think, and it is something certainly to continue striving for, but I, I think it is also something that we can, we can measure. I think we need to find a way to measure if it's not measurable. So.
Okay. Thanks, Director Grace. Bill?
Just the thought occurred to me about uniqueness and specifically the equestrian nature of Bear Valley Springs. And, you know, what I've heard of stories of horse owners who've been chased away from wherever they were and find this kind of a haven in Southern California or California at all, or what have you. And I wonder about preserving that because I think it is part of what really makes this place unique and special is the nature of, and I'm not a horse person, but it's pretty cool, I think, to have that in the community the way we do. So I, I wonder about putting something like that. And again, it's the, the uniqueness in, and perhaps the equestrian nature of, of it.
Thanks, Bill. I'm curious to know who, maybe when the vision was adopted and how, maybe what the process was, was it done by the board? Partnering with staff, was there outreach to the community? I'm just kind of curious to know the backstory. If, if people can share that, that'd be, that'd be terrific.
Christie, do you know?
Well, just one thing. I know, yeah, I've been here about 22 years and it's always been the same. So it's, it predated me.
Okay.
Lost in the midst of time.
I think the board reaffirmed it eight to 10 years ago, but that's all the background I have.
Okay. And it's not uncommon periodically, there's no set time that jurisdictions will review, revise, sometimes discard it and start from, not from scratch, but start with a kind of a blank page. Depending on how their communities evolved, depending on the situation, the mindset of the people in elected office. There's no set time, but sometimes things just kind of lose, as Director Roberts, Vice President Roberts mentioned earlier, some of the, that cost effective, and we could look at some of these other terms. They were, they were the best thinking at the time that people had when they created it, just like all things are. I tend to err the, ever the optimist, people are trying to do their best with uplifting language and maybe what was ever popular at that time, they were adopting and trying to inject into the mindset of the board, the staff and the community. And so periodically jurisdictions will just revisit that. Sometimes terms will lose a little bit of status in our, in our vocabulary. And so it's time to refresh it. The, the key to the vision is just like the mission, it should give you all some reference points and decisions you're making. How do the decisions relate to helping you achieve the vision? How do the decisions relate to executing the mission? If they're not referenced as, as touch points, then their impact is, they're words on a page. I, I think it's really helpful that when you have discussions as a board, and you likely are, to talk about something, whether it's reinvesting in the water system or expanding the roads or what have you, or the gate, that this is related to what we have stated that we believe in our vision and mission to help improve the quality of life. Because the public's not going to always close that loop. We all know that. I mean, it's just not a part of that ecosystem for them. They're looking at it through a different lens. So I'm just offering that the mission and vision can really be influential, not only in the, in the, as a guidepost for decision-making, but also reinforcing it as a message out to the community. If not, it's just, it, it can fall flat or it's not used. And then I look at it and I'm, I'm sort of a little bit critical of that and say, if it's not being used, what's the point of having it? It has to somehow be embedded, not as a prescription, but as more of a description or a narrative. So just offering that, there, there's opportunity there. And maybe that's where you can, if these are refreshed, to better reflect the mindset of you all and where the members are in some respects, making some suppositions, then it can be a more valuable device as how you make decisions and what decisions you make. So, Bill? Oh, I thought you had something.
No.
Okay.
If we, if we change nothing else, we should at least pick out the split infinitive in the third line.
Other thoughts about this? Would it be helpful if maybe Bill and Christie and I went back and gave this a little spit polish and offered an option or two? Maybe made a little more concise and clear, just for you to consider.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would caution that Bill has not been around long enough to remember when the equestrian community and the golf community were at each other's throats for several years. And I don't think we would want to reignite that conflagration.
Yeah, I'll agree with that, Terry, putting our vision, equestrianism as part of our vision. I have horses too. I know Terry does as well. So to not, to say horses and not golf, for golf and not horses. And let's be reminded from our statistics that 15%, very small portion of Bear Valley Springs actually owns horses.
I'll go with unique.
It is a unique community that, that, and that is part of its charm. Having horses here is part of its charm. Don't get me wrong. But to put it in our vision, I think Terry's right, we're inviting conflict.
Yeah, what some communities do is they'll talk about preserve and enhance the heritage and future, sort of those kinds of phrases. So you're honoring the past, you're a sort of a, understanding the present and also trying to enhance the future. So it's not just necessarily more of the same, but you're evolving. So distinctiveness, uniqueness, those are popular words in vision statements. Because you really live in three worlds, the world that you inherit, the world of today, and how you're trying to craft a better world for tomorrow. At least as part of being elected office, trying to influence that and honor that, I should say. So, okay. All right, terrific. Well, I appreciate your indulgence on that. I hope that you found that valuable. Can't tie it all up in a bow. Hopefully, as you, as we, as Christie and Bill and I put a little polish on this and bring this back to you and you decide which, if any, maybe you want to reconsider to adopt and then put in place. It can start to be a touch point for discussions, not just during this process, but as you go through regular meetings. And it gives, as I say, it gives your conversation some lift. It gives a reference point. If, so I just offer that. So, okay. I made some notes and I'm sure Bill and Christie did as well. So we'll go back and compare notes, have to do our homework. So I'm going to stop sharing now. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill. We're at the item about the survey results. And he's going to share the highlights of those. So Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. So is my screen showing?
Yes.
All right. So as, as a backdrop, the survey, and, and we call them satisfaction surveys. They're intended to give us an idea of what, what are our people thinking about what we're doing? Are they satisfied? And, and I see the application of the survey and its results as being a, a tool that helps us focus. So if, you know, you, you identify an area where you can improve and you make efforts to make the improvements, then you can, you know, bring up the overall satisfaction. We'll, we'll touch on that a little bit. But first I want to kind of go through what I saw and then what staff saw too from the survey. And then the intent is this survey tool and the takeaways help to frame up and guide what we do with the resources, with the budget, that we're focusing on those things that the people want us to. So when we get down the line, we're not hopefully distracted by the, the latest thing that crops up because we're, we're focused on these things that the people want us. And we know based on the survey and the plus or minus 2% margin of error, that it's, it's an accurate read of what the community feels. So higher scores first in descending order. A safe place to live. And, and these, you've, you've seen all of the documents. PD got very high marks for treatment, for enforcement, response time. We had a couple good responses here on the green waste and the manure. The, the trash site got a little bit smaller satisfaction. A couple somewhat surprising, but pleasantly, which is the, the ease of the use of the gatehouse pass system and overall satisfaction were high. Staff got some, some good marks here for professionalism, responsiveness. They're well-trained. Here's another public or police for safety education. Ease of getting answers, website. Communicating effectively. And again, we, we kind of cut this, I did cut this off at a six on the other half of the midway point on the one to 10 scale that people had, and then expectations. On the lower end then, starting from the low end and ascending, and this was nothing surprising. Street maintenance and repair. Some of these though, maybe are a little surprising. And I think what they create is an opportunity for us to see where we can communicate better because from an inside perspective, from a managerial perspective, and I, I would think the board too would believe that we are spending dollars wisely. But, but that's not the impression or that's not the perception. And some of this may be left over from years gone by. And we don't have the same sense of, of that's true today. And, and maybe it was, I, I'm not going there, but you wonder about it. And so there's an opportunity for us to educate and inform about what we're doing and how. This is an interesting one. Being a community volunteer is low. Our people weren't stepping up and this may be another opportunity to engage and to get people to help. And when that does happen, by the way, for their own information, they can help reduce costs of their local government. And you see it all over the country. Here's another one communicating on how the dollars are used. Recycling got a relatively low score. Encouraging ideas and involvements. How closely do we compare with their ideal of a local government? Little bit lower. The services, having leaders who are trustworthy. And again, I think, you know, from an inside, I, I don't see how that's developed, but it's there. And so we need to address that. Being well managed and then drinking water quality. Now this one's a little over the six mark. But it was another one that internally we see as an opportunity to dig down a little bit more and try to understand what that means because our, certainly our water is safe. And yet to the extent people question its quality, I wonder where that comes from. Okay. So we had those scores and then we had others that were based upon percentage. So I tried to organize these and highlight a little bit where I think there's the takeaway. So when you look at how often do you go to the transfer station? What this says, if that's 77, 81% of our residents go at least once, maybe even twice per week, which is kind of an interesting thing as we get into looking at solid waste and the rates and, and what the expectations are for our residents. looking at solid waste and the rates and, and what the expectations are, uh, for our residents. Here's the one, uh, that's interesting. 84% of us don't use the manure facilities at all. But we do use the green waste. And here you'll see we've got at least 36% using it at least monthly, but then after that it drops off and some people never even use it. So, um, some interesting statistics that, um, I think we can, uh, factor in as you go about on your, uh, rates, uh, adjustments. This one's interesting. Uh, how frequently do you contact us? Some never. Less than six times a year is 78%. And this comes in, uh, later on, uh, in some of the comments from staff. This one was interesting. You could pick up the three. What do you want to do? Um, do you want to eliminate, uh, services to keep the cost down? Or do you want to reduce them to keep, keep them there? The, the middle here, which is maintain services with a small increase or enhance or improve them with a small increase. So those are up at the high end, but similarly, you know, as you get to pick three, people also said, well, okay, you know, if, if you can keep the, uh, costs from being increased by privatization, well, okay. Or, um, if you can cut my costs through privatization or, or cut the taxes. So these are all somewhat in the same, uh, area. And on the one hand, it's, you know, it's encouraging that the folks aren't, uh, looking for, um, a decrease or they at least understand, and maybe this gets a little to Patrick's issue of value. Hopefully we are providing valuable service and, and they want to keep those things going. So that one's going to be interesting as we, we go forward. This one we thought was interesting too. That 66% of the folks prefer to get their information from us in an email. And if it's not an email, it's a snail mail. Uh, and all these others are way down there. And Bear Tracks is way down there. So as we move forward, think we need to refocus on when and how we send out information. One of the challenges I see for email is, uh, and, and I don't know, Don, if, if you've got any read on that, but, um, to the extent they share their email with us for us to be able to communicate with them. Does that email address then become something that is, um, public? Um, and even if it's not a, a name and, or, and or an address, if people now would have that given away because of a records request, I think that's a challenge, which then focuses on stale mails. Um, because you know, we have about 900 people who've signed up for the email or, uh, newsletter. Uh, but we know that's, uh, you know, short of, we have 3,000 homes. So there's arguably 6,000 people that, that could be signed up. Speaking of which, 54% of our residents didn't know about bear necessities. And we've got to do a better job because that's that other alternative emailed uh, method of getting information out. So that's a great one for us to improve on.
Hey Bill, to answer your question, the Public Records Act does allow us not to disclose private emails. So we can just great added, um, extra to, uh, you know, take them out, but we are entitled to do that. We typically do do that. That's been our practice for a long time. The only exception may be a business or something like that, but all, all private emails, phone numbers, things like that. We always redact.
Well, and I appreciate that. I could just say in another state, uh, we were, um, obligated to give it up. And it, and it created a, a little uproar because people weren't expecting it. And yet the statutes, um, maybe weren't updated yet. And so, um, okay. Interestingly, uh, what type of internet service do you have? And I think I just sent out the, the letter that one of our residents is looking to try to get race, uh, fiber near them. 57% of the folks that responded already, uh, have it. Uh, so that's pretty good. And then here's the one, only 6%. So I know the board members and others will recall people coming to, I think the water, uh, public hearings, water rate hearing saying, I, I, I don't have internet. And, and that was one of the reasons we kind of stepped up mailing things out is to make sure, you know, that people were getting it because it was important information. But in reality, 6% is I think a pretty small percentage. How do they, uh, uh, access the internet? Number one is their smartphone. Number two is their laptop. And after that, it falls off to desk and, and tablet. Now here, 4% don't use the internet, even if they had it. Um, so again, you know, how do we connect and how do we get information to them? Uh, comes out of this. Here's one on the gate. Uh, and the reason I highlighted this is I think there's another opportunity. 50% of the people still phone in a pass, even though you can go onto the web or you can use your smartphone. And every time those folks are doing that, um, that ties up, uh, one of our gate employees and or causes us to have more than one gate employee because of the phone. And so we're a year and a half into that, uh, system. We can, we can improve on it and hopefully get people to use the technology, uh, to get gate passes, uh, for their, for their visitors.
I wonder if that's the same 50% of the people that, uh, didn't hear about the bear necessities newsletter too.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Interesting. Well, I know Megan has some, some, uh, approaches to kind of drill down. Um, we'll get to that a little bit later. Uh, age group. This was one that you saw 80% is 79, but over 55. So our, our community is generally older, generally educated. Here's 62% are college and post, uh, grad graduate. And then the income that was already mentioned. And here's the one, uh, that talked about the, the children. 71% don't have anyone under 12, don't have anyone over 12. And if they're 65 or older, they're not, they have no children. 71%. And then lastly, we are, uh, relatively, uh, it's not totally homogenous, but 83% white and Caucasian. So those were the, the highlights. Um, I guess I, I saw. Now I want to go on and share with you when I had asked all the staff to weigh in and, and get some takeaways unless, uh, maybe this is a good, a good time to uh, ask if there's any questions.
I, I have a question about the pass system one, Bill. Uh, are those numbers consistent with what the gate sees? I mean, do, do they see more than half of the passes that they process, uh, phoned in versus, uh, put in with.
Question. I, yeah, we can, we can check on, on the statistics. Uh, we didn't go around to confirm yet.
I like that question because the, that number could have been skewed by, some people have lots of guests, some people have no guests. So yeah, I, I call it in, right? That's how you do it, isn't it? But they never have guests or very infrequently have guests. So then that's a, I like your question.
All right. We'll take a look. All right. The, the next thing I did was to just put some of these takeaways and then I highlighted some and I'll, um, email this to everyone. So you'll have it as well. Um, you know, 70% drink bottled water. Now there was a question about whether that question itself was, uh, posed uh, as best it could because it kind of assumed you had bottled water. What do you do with it as opposed to saying, do you have bottled water? So for those who have bottled water, uh, 70% use it for drinking. So, um, they're concerned about how long it takes to fix a leak. These are other takeaways, PD sewer, um, mailing. These were what I shared last week. And this is that we're non-diverse overwhelmingly white. I want to say older, um, but whatever, uh, upper middle class. And so here, in other words, privileged, demanding, high expectations of getting what they want. And not necessarily a negative thing, just understand those, that's the makeup. And hopefully we'll get some, uh, validation of that through the, um, census, which should be coming out in the next couple of months. Um, the drinking, uh, water, uh, perception. Um, internally, I think, we think there's, you know, it's indicative of other, other people's opinions, not necessarily the, the true, uh, quality. Um, local management, uh, this is interesting. So there's, there were some lower scores, but then when you look at the statistics, 87% of our residents um, have very little contact with us, uh, less than six times a year. Even though we have, um, a pretty solid, um, percentage to approve some small increases to improve or maintain services. When it comes to reality time, we need a super majority to get those approved. Um, targeted communication. So I think, uh, we mentioned before, even during the board meeting, uh, Megan is, is uh, most excited because the survey helps, um, her understand where we can do a better job in communicating and educating. And so these were some of those takeaways directly out of it. Fire prevention, quad, water quality, tax dollars, safety, et cetera. And then that by doing so, we could improve on these sentiments that also came out of the survey. So that's an interesting way of, of kind of getting to, and I, and I wanted to, uh, bring up the, um, the other slide from, uh, Cobalt that talked about some of the, um, areas where if, if you move those, you increase satisfaction more. There's, there's a multiplier effect, if you recall. Okay. Uh, let's see. So here's where she's saying, um, there's some dissatisfaction, but we, we don't necessarily understand the cause. And so she's looking at what's called flash vote. It is an electronic, um, survey tool that is kind of coming around into local government, um, that uh, can help us on particular instances. And I want to say, I think it's $5,000 a year. And every month you get to issue a survey and it's all electronic. Um, but the, the point is you can drill down and, and ask some further questions about one of these topics to better understand uh, why people gave it the score that they gave it. Some other takeaways, professionalism, responsiveness, et cetera, et cetera. I highlighted these, um, these two, and these are perceptions of staff. And I asked them to comment on any takeaways they had, even if it wasn't their department or their operation. Um, a high positive feeling of safety and security across all demographics. And in the area of the police department, uh, satisfaction scored higher than the nationals or the West or of either grouping, uh, for our population. Uh, in, in these four, and then, hey, there's, there's some room here on the educational side for us to improve. Um, suggesting that maybe DPAC could, um, play a bigger role in, where'd I go? In, um, education. Uh, strong, uh, satisfaction in the gate. Still 50%. Call in, and here's an interesting one. Appears a little support for eliminating things. Um, it's unknown if that category I'd ID'd before of privatization is applicable to the gate or not. That may be one of those where drilling down a little bit more could help. And that is the end of, uh, my notes. So before I stop sharing, I'll ask if you had any, uh, comment suggestions or whatever.
Well, um, you just one comment, uh, about drinking water quality. Um, I know when we came to Bear Valley in 1998, uh, we used to brag about, um, how good the water tastes. And, uh, you came from Las Vegas, Nevada, and we would always talk about the water. And since then, um, uh, you know, some of our wells, um, you need repair and, and, and what have you. And then we, we've been importing more water from Cummings Valley, which a lot of the water is, is, um, is coming from the Kern Frank Canal. And so I think the quality, you know, the taste has changed over time, but we are in the process of renewing, uh, the wells in Bear Valley. So we can use a larger share of that water for our supply. So I think, uh, in the future it's going to improve. Um, uh, but that was just a comment that, um, you know, years ago it was wonderful and it, it has changed. I won't say it's bad, but it, but it's, it has changed. And hopefully we'll get back in the future to uh, having a, uh, you better taste and higher quality water from using Bear Valley wells.
If there's no others, I want to, uh, move on, uh, if I might. And see if I can't pull up, um, the other, just a moment. Okay, um, where'd it go? Did that come up?
Yes.
Okay. And I, and I wanted to bring this up because I, I, I think it's, it's a interesting part of how Cobalt uh, did their research and the, the nature of statistical analysis. So when we look at our scores, there's a perceived performance and then a link with satisfaction. And you'll, you'll recall this when I, when I bring it up, but there are some areas that, that actually we, we could score well, but it really doesn't change the, um, satisfaction. Over here, these high impact areas have a strong relation. These do too, but we got lower scores. So why is that important? You recall this one, which takes all of these, um, items and, and graphs them into that, um, chart. Higher impact, higher satisfaction. And it's a, it's a pretty solid grouping, I think. Um, kind of all relatively in the middle, but then they went one step further and kind of zoomed in and talked about these areas that were lower. And that as you go out here, the relationship to overall satisfaction, if you, uh, essentially start focusing on these, as you move one, I'll pick 31, whatever it is, um, openness to residents, questions or concerns. As you move that one up in, um, your rating, there's a, there's a multiplier effect is the way that, um, Will Santa Moore had, had framed it up. So part of what I wanted to also touch on was that these areas, as you look at what are we doing, et cetera. I think you ought to keep an eye on those particular areas here that can create greater satisfaction as we improve on them. Okay? So that's all I wanted to kind of hit on. And then I'll stop sharing unless there was questions about those.
Uh, question, Bill, if I might, I'm curious to know what, you know, if the bottom right are the areas where the board by decisions it makes can improve satisfaction. What questions did Cobalt, did they identify those on their own? Or did those come out from the analysis of the survey? I'm just curious to know. And then, and then in particular, and then in particular, what those questions are, because those might feed into, uh, potential objectives.
Right here.
Yeah, we can't really read that. That's the, I, I can't.
Okay. Well, let me try this. So real quickly, these, you know, by coloring, a lot of these are the local management over. So real quickly, these, you know, by coloring, a lot of these are the local management overall scores. Messing around.
Okay.
And so I would say number 23 is the overall. And then these that kind of circle around 31 is openness. I'd hit on that. 28 is spending dollars wisely. 25 is being well managed, efficient and organized, et cetera, as opposed to this is the fire question. So fire education, we, we scored over the, the 6.5, right? So it's pretty good. But that really wouldn't have, as we tried to move that up, it wouldn't have the same impact on resident satisfaction as if we moved number 34 up. Because number 34's relationship to the overall satisfaction is very high. So if we moved that one, what's that one? The ease of getting your question answered. If we move that one up, arguably then the overall satisfaction by moving that one improves. So that's the, kind of the, the inherent statistical analysis and, and aspects of statistical surveys that maybe isn't so apparent from just the results, but it's based upon some of the interrelatedness of questions and responses that, that they receive.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. I'm going to stop sharing then unless there's any other questions. Okay.
So I'm interested, if I might, to ask the board as well as Bill, maybe what your takeaway is from the survey, just in general, there's a lot of data points, there's some narrative there. Can be kind of over a little like drinking from a fire hose. There's so much coming at you, but I'm curious to know maybe what thematically that emerged from you that you can share with the rest of the group, kind of just your interpretation. If you'd like to do that. Anybody want to hazard a a point of view? I mean, remember surveys are like stepping on the scale. It's what you do when you get off the scale. How do you respond to that? And people can be a little fickle. You know, they say one thing, they believe in that we're all, you know, we're people, we're flawed. So sometimes, you know, surveys are a source of information. That they're not, they're not, they're not, I would offer, they're not the, they're not proverbial silver bullet that defines everything. So I'm sorry, Vice President Roberts.
Yes, Patrick. For me, there's a great deal of information for we the board to really study. I, you know, to make a comment now for me is, is, you know, I'm just a little bit, you know, it's a lot of information. I, I, I would want to have these copies and actually really go over and try to understand what each one of them represents. And particularly on the chart that shows a little balls with numbers on them. You know, you need to digest that thoroughly before I can even comment. It would be unfair.
Okay. I appreciate that. You're right. There's a lot here to process. And I was just curious to know maybe your initial reactions or interpretations. If it was reaffirming some of your gut, if it was maybe just disconnected from what you thought people would say.
A lot of it is, is not so surprising and, and, and that's a good thing. It kind of validates all of our collective and individual priorities of what we're, what we're hoping to accomplish going forward. But the the elephant in the room, you know, is the delta between our perception and potentially some reality and how how money is spent and how services are provided versus the residents and how they perceive the money they are spending in, in assessments and taxes and what they're getting for their money. So that's the, that's the delta that we need to to close. And again, it's nothing magical about it. It's nothing new. But it, it, like I say, it's the elephant in the room that we need to, we need to tackle. And, and once we do that and, and try to convey a sense of investment and a sense of, of buy-in from the public, not a, not a us versus them, but a, a collective goal setting and a collective buy-in that we're all moving in the same direction. I think, I think we've, we've taken a huge step into doing our job.
Okay. Thanks, Director Grace. I think Director Jensen, you had something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I, I think trying to reconcile the difference between the low number of people that have actually contacted the CSD. I think it was something like less than six a year. And yet the, the poor perception of management. I, I don't think you necessarily have to be contacting the CSD to have that perception. You just look around, you know, crumbling roads, water leaks. Things that people see create their perception of what management is doing. So once people see things fixed, they'll have a better idea of a better opinion of management. They don't necessarily have to be calling them to have that opinion.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. We take in information and we interpret just from driving around. It's evident, right? There's symbols of it. As you said, Director Jensen, good, right, and good, right, wrong and indifferent. But people draw, they interpret from roads or water or what, fill in the blank or the gate. So it's, it's a little bit more of a passive interpretation they might have. It's not always the direct contact they have with people out in the field, in the, in district offices or over the phone. We're, we're constantly sensing. And sometimes people look for information that simply reaffirm what they already think. Told you that. So I, that's a, a, a really good point that you were sharing. Other thoughts? I'm curious to know too, Bill, from your, you know, you've had a chance to kind of soak up the data. I know you've spent a fair amount of time reviewing it and putting together your notes. I'm curious to know maybe what your take is thematically, both maybe positives as well as areas for improvement that can help maybe the board as we transition into where, where you're going from here.
I think we all have a, a pretty good idea of, of what reality is. And by that, I mean our capacity to physically change things. So we're doing better with the water system as a result of the rate adjustment. We can do better with the sewer and then the, the solid waste rates. And then we move in, my perspective is onto the roads and and along the way that our, our capacity to make a whole lot of visible changes, I think, is just obviously limited by resources. So my takeaway is putting the effort into the communications on these items is probably the best bang for the buck. It can help not only garner, you know, support and generate greater confidence on our residents parts. But it can, as we saw some of those areas, it can improve their satisfaction as they become more and better informed. So that, that's my, my big takeaway. Given, you know, we have some, some really good solid scores where it matters. I'm, I'm really pleased with the PD scores. So people are appreciative of that. We get scores on the solid waste and, and even, you know, what we do from a management and or office perspective. So the others that are lower, there's a number of those that we can improve upon by doing a better job of communicating, probably means we have to mail it to them. But we can, we can do that and, and make a greater connection. So.
Okay. Other thoughts? I think this reinforces to the survey results like it does in most local governments and jurisdictions. Is it reinforces the notion that you're constantly managing expectations? Which is never ending. Articulating the value proposition where we spent part of the morning about value and mission. Trying to give it lift, trying to set, trying to advocate that tomorrow's a better day than yesterday, but also holding yourself accountable and moving in that direction. As you all know very well. And then how you're, as Bill just mentioned, how you're communicating that out to members, residents who live in the district. Executing against that and then following through on that and then reminding them of what you did. It's really a, a process. It's not an event, communicating with people. What, regardless of the platform, sometimes we get lost in the platforms, but it's really, I would say, the content, the relevancy and the frequency really drive impact. You can tell people think, I'm not saying you're doing this, but we all know, we, we don't read every email we get, do we? No, we don't. We get overwhelmed. I mean, the volume is enormous. We tend to read those that we think are relevant to whatever we're doing for that, whatever. It's a subscription or it's a business work related, or it's a board related, whatever, fill in the blank. A lot of it has to do with relevance. The challenge, I think, that, that most local governments have is trying to make the, what is seemingly invisible, relevant to people. That, that's a hard nut to crack because it's not very sexy. Some of that's not very sexy till it's not there. And you all know that some of those issues that you're committed to doing are very visible. How do you then recommunicate and manage those expectations? It's, it's not an easy task. And again, I'm not trying to muddy the water. I'm just talking about frequency, relevance and content have a lot to do with impact. As Bill was alluding to, some people get their information one way. So as you may recall, we were together last week when I talked about how people look at you as a credible community builder. I think the first thing they look at, what are the results you're achieving on their behalf? And how are you communicating that out to them? What, what was done? So I'm sorry, President.
That's okay. I'm just elaborating. Maybe we need to be instead of a CSD, that Community Services District, are you saying we should be the CSSD, the Community Sexy Services District?
That sounds good. I think that's would be good.
How do we, how do we increase the appeal of water?
Well, I think part of it is the storytelling. We understand, well, I mean, part of it is, you know, we could, it, it's taking what would seem almost dull or boring to the casual observer and trying to give it, as I said, lift. And, and what's the narrative? I mean, obviously people are paying attention to environmental services beyond all of you. It's came up in the survey. How do you make water relevant to people's vibrancy? And it's kind of the lifeblood of their life. And what's the district's role in ensuring that? And wastewater and roads. I think some of it has to do with the storytelling, obviously rooted in both fact and also trying to shape perceptions.
Be cheerleaders or a spirit team or something to say, we not only did we give you the water, but we were really happy when we did it.
Well, I think there is some of that. I mean, if you don't toot your horn, who will? There's always going to be people that's pushed back. It's not about vanity. I think there's about modesty, but in some respects, I think most local governments don't do that well enough to their own residents. And then, then we sort of get all, you know, we're all kind of part of the chorus. We get frustrated when people don't appreciate it. Well, we're, we're part of the converted. It's not compelling to people. We're kind of nerdy about that, right? All of us on here. We're paying attention to things. It's not better or worse, but I just, we're looking through different lenses. It's, it's within our kind of the frame of reference we're looking at, whether we're driving around or what you're doing every day. It's kind of part and parcel to what you do. But to other people living their lives, either retired or they're enjoying their lifestyle, some of they just want to turn on the spigot and they want quality water. They want it to go down the drain and be gone. Right? They want to drive out. I mean, we all get that. How do you bring that to their attention? That that's also, and you've got some history there to share that it's at risk that if decisions aren't made on their behalf to ensure that quality, that consistency, that reliability, that things can suffer and not overnight, but it's just, no pun intended. It's a drip, drip, drip. It's not about drama and gripping them with drama or else, you know, kind of the sky is falling. But it's having that steady diet that that reinvestment in the infrastructure is mission critical to the, to the quality of life.
What about a few minute videos when somebody takes turbidity or may takes a measurement at the wastewater? Hey, we, this is part of our monthly responsibility to report to the water board. Here's, this got done. Just let you know, good job. And send that out to our 50% of newsletter people, stuff like that.
Yeah, I think it's definitely, there's no shortage of devices and content. It's making that a strategy. Many of you talked to me about that during our pre-session phone calls. And definitely you're part of that, that realm of the movement that marketing is a process, not an event. It's called social marketing. And you're never really done with that. You've obviously committed to that with ensuring internal resources to focus on that on a regular basis by securing a Megan and others, just the advocacy. So I, I'm just trying to offer that you're trying to also part, while you're trying to message out, you're also obviously, as you all know, make the decisions that you've got better messages maybe to deliver out there. And that's what was mentioned to kind of the elephant in the room, if you will. And so that's what we're trying to do today is not focus so much on the, the messaging. It's what is it that you want to move forward? And then the devices are there to message it out. Yes, Bill.
Just to piggyback and, and I think, you know, I've mentioned to the board individually that, you know, with directors Jensen and Grace coming on board and in for the, the other directors having a more detailed orientation of what we do to get familiar with our operations and issues is some, you know, something that we're working on. And we're challenged by the nature of the, you know, COVID and so on. So we've been working on and hopefully this resonates with you, Patrick, as to an approach, but we're, we're developing essentially online orientation program. Wastewaters is getting close to being done so that we can share that. And inform and educate our directors first and foremost. And then be able to have some conversations about things to kind of embellish and, and get more detail. But then we can post it for our residents. We can, we can share that to, to use it again. And maybe more and more so that becomes how we tell our stories. And it through narratives and visuals and so on. Besides just mailing it to the house, you know, we can send something out, tune in here. And so anyway, it's, it's something that's in the progress and hopefully we'll kill three birds with one stone now.
Yeah. Yeah, I would offer this to you. Thank you for sharing that, Bill. I'm going to offer this, then we'll take a, take a quick break, but without seeming overly overestimating, I think if given the right circumstances, we could take just about anything you do and turn it into a blockbuster movie. It's all in the storytelling. It's only boring if we think that it is. It's only routine if we think that it is. So as Bill was just saying, taking it and making seemingly the ordinary extraordinary to a lot of people, it's compelling, but it has a lot to do with the, the, the delivery of the message, not just posting it, right? But it's content of what you're posting. Cause you're not the audience for your message. Let me repeat that. You're not the audience for your message. And I think sometimes we lose sight of that. We, governments talk and jargon and vernacular shortcuts, acronyms. Then we wonder why the public doesn't always understand it. So I'm just offering that as a kind of the recipient. You know, talk to your neighbors. If they can't process things, have them visit the website. Let them try to figure out how to navigate things. Cause that's probably the typical resident, not, you know, we all know the shortcuts. We all know kind of how to navigate it. I'm not trying to be critical in that sense, but taking the, the typical resident, asking them to do something, whatever it might be, and then be an anthropologist and watch them and don't help them. It might give you a good indicator about whether some missed opportunities. It's not about being critical. It's just holding that mirror up and saying, yeah, you know, we need to modernize that. You've talked a lot about that with the gate, how you've made changes there. You obviously have more on the horizon. And I use that word modern. I know that's a little corny. But I think that's a good reference point to say, how modern is the district in both its advocacy, its operations, its service delivery, its communication and marketing? And so I'm just offering that. So I think there was somebody else had a hand up or?
I was just going to say, Patrick, I think this is kind of where you were going, but we don't want to get too wrapped around the axle of messaging. The fact is there are real problems and we've got to figure out how to solve them. And we've got to, the public will see that when they get solved. It's not simply a fact of everything is flawless and the public just doesn't get it. So I don't want to absolutely, there are areas and many areas where this district, long before I got here, certainly has been doing a terrific, a terrific job, but there are also problems that need to be solved. So we don't want to, we want to bring the two together and not, not get so wrapped up in, in just, we're not telling a good enough story and people aren't hearing it. As Charles mentioned, you know, people, people see what they see and they live it every day. And they know, and they know where shortfalls are. And we know that too. We're residents and that's, that's why we're here. So that, that's my only comment is, is messaging is definitely important, but storytelling is definitely important. Buy-in is important. But also got to figure, figure a lot of things out as well.
Yeah, you get, you, you got to get stuff done and then tell them, tell them, as we were saying, tell them, tell them what you told them, tell them again. Cause if people see that, that it's marketing. That it's marketing, but the substance isn't there, then we've all seen that. And then it creates sort of, it seems disingenuous. To the casual.
That was my, my point in a nutshell.
Yeah, Patrick, what was interesting is is on the survey. We we asked the question, how do you want to receive your communication? And that's, that's very telling. So I think we have to adapt to what the people, how they want to receive their communications. And I, you know, I think the top three is probably it, but that was very interesting to me that, you know, they would prefer to have. By and large, my email, I, you know, I didn't think that before and now we know. So we just have to adapt to get the. You know, the message out through proper communication, through the proper methods of communication.
Yeah. And just to offer one final note to that, and we'll take a break is. Sometimes the the dilemma there beyond the technique and the delivery channel. Is people often when they call you or they stop by district offices when they were able to do that. They approach you with how they feel about something. Sometimes the response is facts. So there's a disconnect. It's like two ships passing in the night. People tell you how that what they feel. I mean, think of that survey. Those are all feelings. Those are all based in fact. So I would just, I think to your point, Vice President Roberts, it's it's also in the messaging, in the content, I'm down on the mechanics here. It's trying to make sure that you're designing and delivering the message so it resonates with the reader, not with the people who are designing it. And sometimes that's a, there are blind spots. We all have them. That we write for ourselves. We write because we understand it. And I think it's trying to not let the tail wag the dog. But when you talk to people about if you're going to, you know, roads or water rates, it's that sense of empathy and awareness about how they're going to receive that without diluting your message. And I think that requires a certain amount of deft and tact and diplomacy without kind of coloring the message. But it's not just here you go and pound them with it. Then it lands like a thud. I think we all know that. And you can be right, but be very ineffective.
You know, what Director Grace said too, is. People have to know, we can't just go repave all of our roads tomorrow. So if we can announce that we're making progress towards, here's what we're doing to see that this eventually happens. Those are positive messages too. And no, it's not trying to blow smoke up anybody's rear end about, you know, how great we think we are. We're aware of these problems and these are our steps towards completing it. Here's our, here are our goals. So all good stuff.
Okay, I've got 10 o'clock. So if we can take a break and be back at 10:15. And and fashion the future as when we come back. Okay. Enjoy your break. See you soon.
I've got 10:15. Shall we get this show on the road? Back on the road?
Okay. All right, welcome back, everyone. Hope you had a good break. We're now at item five on the agenda, page two for Tuesday, March 16. And we're also on, if you have the the workbook that I, that's what I referred to this. If you have that page 17, potential objectives for the key focus areas, I'm going to share my screen just real quickly. And then come back so you all can see each other. I want to make sure you have this page. Shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. That's really what. The six focus areas are that you're trying to identify objectives for. Roads in no particular order, roads, police, water, wastewater, solid waste, internal district operations. And an area that Bill and I talked about yesterday that you may want to consider including maybe as a seventh, just to give it some emphasis, a little bit of punch. Is financial sustainability as a particular area of focus. I'm just suggesting that that's by no means a given. What we want to do now, and this is a little messy, and that's the nature of these. So it's roads, police, water, wastewater, solid waste, internal district operations, financial sustainability. I'm going to stop sharing now. To listen to the board members and Bill, I'd like you to contribute where you think is appropriate. What are some objectives that you want to see move forward? Maybe sooner faster. We're trying to avoid doing any particular voting. Today, just so you have a more broad-based conversation. The outcome of this discussion with some definition to it. If Bill were working with his, his team. Go back and put some more particulars to these items and bring these back before you for a consideration in a future board meeting. So we're not trying to tie it all up today either. We're definitely trying to make progress, get you out of the gate, get you running around the track. Some of what you might identify are additions, or I mean, supplements of things that are already underway. As you all know, there's already a lot in the queue, as Bill described last week. So want to have an open back conversation back and forth to try to figure out what objectives do you want to move on? And if there's an item out there that's not necessarily been identified in Bill's list, if there's a discussion about whether you want to even consider adding that to the list as well. So we're not trying to tie it all up today either. We're definitely trying to make progress, get you out of the gate, get you running around the track. Some of what you might identify or additions, or I mean supplements of things that are already underway. As you all know, there's already a lot in the queue, as Bill described last week. So want to have an open back conversation back and forth to try to figure out what objectives do you want to move on? And if there's an item out there that's not necessarily been identified in Bill's list. If there's a discussion about whether you want to even consider adding that to the list as well. So who wants to just to start the conversation off about potential objectives for the foreseeable future? I'll just leave that as a timeframe, the foreseeable future. What do you think? What needs to happen sooner faster, what's underway that you think needs to? You know, continued efforts toward it, I mean, many of you talked with me about roads and water and wastewater, those were sort of top. Sort of top of mind as you talked with me during our pre-session phone calls.
Well, just, you know, just a comment, we have, we have dealt with the water rate increases to generate the dollars to start improving the infrastructure because they're over fifty years old. We have dealt with the, with the sewers increases. And next up has got to be the solid waste, there's some issues there and they need to be resolved. And you know, we have redesigned, if you will, or reconstructed the solid waste and now because of the wastewater management wants to raise prices and what have you, we're going to have to make some, some cost adjustments there. So that's, you know, that's on the horizon right away.
Okay. So solid waste is on the horizon, you're going to be making some recommendations to modify that, it sounds as though that's an objective, right? And some of these are not, I won't say mandated, but some of these are strongly encouraged because in order to do that reinvestment, as you just talked about Vice President Roppers with water and sewer. And then solid waste, so they're, however, sometimes they're optional because people kick the can down the road. As you've all mentioned, many of you've mentioned, so trying to steel yourself for those things.
Right. Patrick, I believe that you had asked us to look at the 2021 projects.
Yeah.
And kind of do some prioritizing to the extent possible. You know, all these things are great ideas, but as you said, and I shouldn't say ideas, but programs, but you can't have everything, number one. Company I used to have, used to be affiliated with, they had priorities and everything was very high, high, medium high. And nothing was actually low, you know, which meant that probably nothing was actually going to get done. So in looking at the list that Bill had provided us. I was thinking in terms of where is the public going to have the interface on roads? You know, given the 2021 list. And people will see the street name signs being changed. People will see equestrian sign crossings put in or cleaned up. People will see regulatory signs being clearer. The Lower Valley Road and West End Striping Project, yes, that would be seen. Most people will not be aware of the work truck lease program. Good idea, but it doesn't really do anything for public perception. Looking farther down, spring crack cleaning, fall crack cleaning and repair deer trail delamations. These are the highest ones for perception questions. But none of them can be put back and say, well, we're not going to do them this year. They all sort of have to be done, but that's what you asked for is prioritizing and that's what I'm saying on roads.
Okay, thank you, Director Quinn.
I took that list for each section and put like a one, a two, or a three. Three not being unimportant, but high, medium high, just like Terry was saying. And that's important, but for roads, I think what, what I don't really see on the list is figuring out a way to replace our hundred and ten miles, aside from the ones that are under consideration already, but some type of grant, some type of loan, some type of bond measure to get past to fund this multi tens of millions of dollars needed to replace all of our roads. And I think we should get something in motion to do that.
Okay. Other thoughts, oh, go ahead, President, I'm sorry, some.
Yeah, for, for roads, I mean, to go off of what President Han was saying. Do we need to replace all hundred and ten miles of roads? I mean, we don't know that. I believe Mr. Mallonan was going to email me a study from a few years ago. Showing road condition that was done and I'm still waiting for actually, but it, it basically surveyed all of the roads in Bear Valley and giving their conditions. I don't think all of the roads need to be replaced, I think some of them can be chip sealed. Some of them need further, further maintenance. And some of them may need complete reconstruction, but ultimately I don't think we're looking at all hundred and ten miles of roads. And until we get a detailed report of what needs to be done, I don't think we can really talk about it. What can be done immediately? Both from a perception standpoint and a safety standpoint is striping. I mean, we, we talk about how, you know, the perception of management is poor, yet not many people communicate with them. Part of that perception is that you've got a lot of people that have lived here a long time and they're accustomed to different levels of maintenance. I can remember when we moved here fourteen, fifteen years ago, the roads would get striped either every year or every other year. And that's important for safety here because we get a lot of fog. I mean, if, if you can't see the lines, you're going to end up driving off the road and getting hurt and we don't want to see that. So I think striping all of the roads, especially the main roads on a regular basis, needs to be a priority. As, as far as maintenance goes, we know we have issues with, with Will Dan and with the, the loop that was done. But we're looking at probably a lengthy solution to that matter. What are we going to do in the meantime? Are we going to crack seal these roads that were repaved so that they don't further deteriorate? Or are we just going to let them go and hope for the best with our lawsuit?
Charles, I absolutely agree that we don't have to replace all hundred and ten miles of roads, so I'd like to walk back my comment. Because we'll definitely prioritize the ones that are terrible right now. And over the next five to 10 years, as those get fixed, the ones that are medium will probably be terrible, that kind of thing. So thank you for the offering that opportunity to clarify. No, we don't need to fund a project to replace our roads, we need to have some vehicle in place so that where we are now doesn't happen again. To get to a point where any mile of our roads is in horrible, horrible shape, so thanks.
And Mr. President, for reference, what Director Jensen's referring to is called a pavement condition index. And that is an analysis, it's a, it's a study based on going through and doing some, you know, non-destructive testing of the roads to understand what the subgrade is that you can't see and whether or not it's, you know, of how stable and it, and it looks at the surface as well, because there's different kinds of failures that can occur to the surface and and what you do with that is from zero to one hundred, one hundred being a brand new, perfect road surfaces, they get, they get raided. And with that, then you can prioritize hopefully better where you want to put your dollars and cents to get the best bang for your buck. And frankly, sometimes the strategy for that is that when you set a policy that your roads will be on average a seventy and you've got some things starting to slip to sixty-five and then you've got some thirties. You actually might invest in the sixty-fives to keep them up. As opposed to trying to bring the thirties up as an example, so maybe my point is putting on our list a new, because the one that was done was in 2012. I suspect in eight years, there's been some further deterioration of the roads and their condition. To what level, we wouldn't know, but we could do those, those surveys for hundred and ten miles, I don't know. I, I just know last time, I guess I got involved in it, it was probably a forty or fifty thousand dollar study, so FYI.
Just another comment from a, a construction standpoint. And, and how we spend our dollars going forward. When you talk about roads, we haven't considered what's underneath the road and that's water lines. So whatever we do with roads, you have to, at that time, replace, you know, the fifty-one year old water lines underneath the road. Because we're having so many water line breaks, so you know, it's a double edged sword, so it's important that especially elevations, you know, we got to start thinking about replacing those water lines underneath the roads before we do anything with the roads, because we want to maximize dollars spent at one time.
Yes, so much of this is centered around planning, as is always the case. You know, Bill's talked several times about the twenty-year capital improvement plan that is a big priority, I know on his, on his docket. We've talked kind of cursorily recently about a hydro geological survey for the wells. Roads and as Steve said, water is the same and as Charles was indicating, you know, priority prioritization plan. Now there again, we don't want to get wrapped around, you know, we're always planning and never doing. But it is important to, rather than, than being reactive, to be proactive and, and, and identify the, the focus areas and the areas that need immediate attention. So, so I would agree in some, in some ways, the question is a little, a little premature that we need to, we need to do that planning. But I think that is the strategy at this point is do the, do the studies, whatever they may be.
Totally agree, yeah, in Dr. Grace's will put.
And Steve, you and I have talked a lot about this offline in terms of the context of the, of the infrastructure committee.
Correct.
Thoughts, additional thoughts about the roads, water, wastewater?
One of the things just for, for everybody's application, I guess, is we began doing the three-phase study for capital replacements. And the first was the inventory and I think everyone's seen the four binders that are about a foot tall combined. The inventory for the sewer and the water and for the most part. And the water certainly is the most significant infrastructure because the above and below ground. That said, the, the second phase of all that was the assessment, so we, we kind of can check off the wastewater. I think part of that process that was begun, we need to continue and that would be the water system assessment. Probably need to veer off a little bit into the stormwater system assessment, you know, we got our pun intended, feet wet with the stormwater system down at the gate to recognize, we have a, a lot of that. And I know Daniel and his crew have been going about cleaning them and kind of inventorying, so we're, we're wanting to do that as well. The, the challenge in, in my head will be a little bit more of how do you assess the water system below ground? Other than we know we get breaks, so FYI, you know, Don Smith's doing GIS work. And as we get the data in and we can begin to map failures in the systems. Hopefully that will be a, a way of at least getting some amount of correlation that could have us focus on particular parts of the system that maybe are failing at a greater rate than others. So that we might put some resources there to avoid spending more just fixing it. But, but obviously it's a, it's a huge undertaking with a hundred and ten miles and, you know, thirty-five hundred service connections and so on. But, but challenge I, I think is how do you assess what's underground there? Because you can't necessarily do the same kind of videotaping that you can on a sewer system, so some other approaches. We get done with that, the third phase was how do you finance it all? So you, you should have figured out what you had to fix on all of that inventory through your assessment and then the third phase. So I think that, that is still an important project and process for us to keep going on.
Bill, just, is that, where do you see the phases maybe in this calendar year? Do you see that you're going to be able to complete phase two and then come back with phase three for a discussion?
Honestly, I don't know about phase two. Part of, I think what I'm anticipating is we, we need to really unearth and, and focus on how and what is the, the, the number of options for assessing the water. Because you're, you're talking about mains, we have, I don't know, ten different types of, of lines down there or something. And then you've got the, the service lines, you know, meters are a big thing. That's not necessarily on the front burner, but it is on a burner of when and how do we replace those? Because my, my old rule of thumb was a water meter loses one percent of its accuracy. And it only goes one way, by the way. So if you were getting a hundred, the next year you, you still put a hundred through, but it only records ninety-nine. And when you've got a twenty-year-old meter, you're putting out a hundred, but it's only recording eighty. So what that means is you're losing revenue on the system that is likely the districts to charge for. So being on top of that is an important piece of that whole system. Having a remote read would be nice, get, get off on a tangent. I think if we can figure out and find someone to help do an assessment in some way of how do we prioritize, I think that'd be an accomplishment for the year.
All right. And that's for water and possibly stormwater. Was there anything else on wastewater sewer this year?
Yeah, just a quick comment, follow up with President Han. He touched on grants, you know, we're never in my lifetime or probably most of our lifetimes will, will ever have enough money to do what we're talking about. So it would make sense to try to find somebody that is expert with the federal government as to where the money's hidden. Because there's so many grants out there that nobody even knows about. So it's important to, to look at this, you grant issue as an objective for helping to solve our problem. And I think that's extremely important, we can have that dialogue later, but I just wanted to bring it up just to follow up with what Greg was saying.
I appreciate that, Steve. I, I am not hopeful, just sometimes I just talk right out loud and I'm not always gauging everything I say, right? But I don't think there are grants available for our roads. The, the grants would come from other people's tax dollars that don't even live here. We couldn't even get the gas tax, our share of the gas tax, because Kern County is kind of porting that to themselves. That their attorney has a different interpretation than ours about what we're entitled to as far as that, that gas tax money. I, I don't think there is a chance that we can apply for grants to fix what our residents here would probably have to pay for. I, I'm not going to discourage anyone from going out and looking. When I say grants, I just don't think there are any available.
Why, just let me comment on that. You know, there is, there's money available with federal government having to do with rural areas. Example, race communication didn't come in here and spend their money to put in fiber optics. They got a federal grant for that to bring in internet into the rural and that's happening all over the country. And so that's exactly what happened, they had a grant to put in fiber optics in, in Stallion Springs here at Bear Valley and, and the other outlying areas. So I believe there is money available for rules, not necessarily just for roads, but like the infrastructure, water, you, what have you. It is worth going down that road to try to figure that out, because we're not ever going to have the kind of money that it's going to take. Because as we talked about, the can was kicked down the road for fifty years. You know, if, you know, if we started reserve money fifty years ago and every year just added to it, we would have a whole lot of money right now, but we don't. Because it wasn't done, so we have to think outside the box and, and chase down every avenue that we can to try to generate the dollars in order to accomplish this for our citizens.
And everything you said, I agree with. I'm not holding out a lot of hope for grants, but if they're there, let's get them. And yes, we have to make up fifty years of lost opportunity, where if they just had a one percent more or a slight increase every couple of years. And yes, we have to make up fifty years of lost opportunity where if they just had a one percent more or a slight increase every couple of years. Then we would have a pool of money and there'd be some people out there that, you have seven million dollars in your checking account. Why don't you just go out and, not your checking account, but your, uh, investment portfolio? Why don't you just spend some of that on, on this? So you're right. I agree with everything you said.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts about? You know, I don't, we, who knows where this will go? You know, there's talk, there's talk on and off the federal level about an infrastructure bill. They seem to kind of vacillate about that. I do know, and I think Bill knows this well, that when whatever money is. Ultimately adopted, if any, um, there's a threshold. They prioritize and they're going to look at shovel ready projects. Typically, that's how it happens. Because they want to see results soon, just that whole optics, right? So part of that is how does the district continually prepare itself, whether it's internal money, whether it's state or federal grants. Or federal legislative money, if you will, to be prepared to take advantage of those opportunities. And sometimes grants or funding from the feds is all about, are you ready to go? And it's trying to anticipate and trying to prepare. And then, you know, it's not always based on merit. I know you're shocked. It's not always based on merit. Grants aren't even always based on merit. They're based on telling a story. Getting state and federal legislators to advocate on your, on your behalf. Um, and then also monitoring the deadlines. I mean, there's a, there's a whole process. I'm just sharing that with you that. It, it, we all know grants aren't the, the silver bullet or the pocket pot of gold. But there is a strategy about securing federal and state money. Bill knows that well. His staff, I'm sure does as well. It's trying to, do you want to prioritize that? But it's not going, it's, it's sort of, do you have the projects then go find the money? Or do you got to go find the money and then get the projects? Usually it's you get the projects and go find the money. Then you tend to rise and you have a little bit more leverage to advocate on your community's behalf. Then we need the money for what? Well, we need it for, and then there's just this laundry list. And then it becomes a wish list. And then they're, hey, they're not gonna, they're not gonna fund based on an, an approach. They're gonna based on, do you have, uh, are you ready to go? I don't mean shovel ready like you're ready to turn dirt literally, but how close are you to, to having been able to secure a contractor to make an investment on that? So I'm sure Bill can chime in on that. He knows that better than I do, but just to offer sort of that, that concept of grants. And, and federal and state and all that.
Not my only, my only two cents. I think the board's been aware of it, but to some extent, the public needs to be aware too. The, the socioeconomic demographics of Bear Valley Springs don't necessarily lend themselves to grants. There used to be more abundance of grants. And as that's kind of dried up, it, it gets focused on the most needy. So when, when you do that, then you start talking about median income levels for a community and. You know, that, that criteria will kick us out of the ballpark right away, for the most part. That's not to say we can't be successful like we were on the, on the tree removal grant. But that's a different kind of thing. So when you, when you start talking about infrastructure. Most times there's going to be some, some sense of disadvantage-ness of a community that. That gets them in the door. So I just share that. So, um, I, I, I heard the, it's a priority. I understand that. I don't disagree either. The reality of it is, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be slim pickings is what I think. So.
Other thoughts about water, wastewater, roads? Other items that you prioritized that we made, that we've not talked about, that you want to see progress made on? That from board members that want to share?
I just hit on it a few minutes ago, just briefly, and, and it, it was discussed at the last. Regular session meeting and, and it's, and Bill and I have talked about it extensively. It's the, uh, the life of our wells and getting more independence from Cummings Valley. Bringing more water production into, back into, uh, into the valley. And that again is an extensive process, the hydro geological survey, prioritizing. Identifying wells that are in most immediate need, but that would be a. I don't know if I would say it's secondary to roads. I think roads are at the top of everybody's list, but, uh, but the lifespan of our water production system is. Is a close, a close second.
Thank you, Director Grace. Think about, uh, it's a year from now. Um, it's March twenty twenty two. Hopefully we've moved on to the next normal by then, whatever that looks like. We're meeting in person. And I ask you, or Bill asks you, which he asks you regularly in some ways, shape or form, you know. It's March twenty twenty two. We're looking back on the last year. What's been accomplished? What do you want to feel good about a year from now that's either been accomplished in realistic terms, pragmatic terms, or is underway? So I, I think kind of just putting, I'm just using that as a timeframe, a year. And then how do you re-engineer that to make sure that happens? Whatever that might be, that might give you a little, because sometimes we're always thinking of what's right in front of us. But I think if we can help kind of get you to think beyond the near term and a little bit more of the short term, and I just use a year as a timeframe. And you're looking back, what's, what's done a year from now? What's underway a year from now? What progress maybe that you're feeling good that? Because we all know, talking about it right here, it doesn't necessarily translate to an action. It's what you do as a result of these decisions to put them forth. That's, that's the rub, right? That's the challenge. You all know that. But, but what's happening a year from now? What's going to make you sense? What, what's going to help you feel good that this session was productive in, in channeling effort?
Having a roadmap in place that has target dates to complete. Progress towards some of these problems, solutions to some of these problems.
Okay. Okay.
Timeline, perhaps call it a timeline.
Kind of a dashboard with an item, progress, completion. Okay, I just use that as a, as a quick term.
If we have had identified the steps it takes to start repairing some of the really bad roads. What are the steps that we have to do to start turning the dirt over and, you know, making the, putting the shovel to work? All the stuff that before that.
Okay, that's good. Yeah. What other thought? Thank you, President Han. Other thoughts, you know, a year from now, some of this is speculative. But we're trying to root it in the reality of the situation you're contending with and what progress you want to be able to, to feel good about. Talking with your colleagues or telling residents, yes, we've made progress. We're not finished. However, we're better, we're a better place than we were a, a year ago. We bit the bullet, you know, and we kept moving forward despite some of these challenges, financial and otherwise, we kept moving forward. Remember, if these decisions were easy, you would have already done them. So the nature of these conversations imply there's some complexity and some, some challenges with, associated with it. So other thoughts?
Well, on the horizon is, is us, um, our solid waste, um, resolving some of the problems that we have there. We're facing a new contract with, uh. Rising cost per dumpster. Uh, our solid waste is in three phases. It's, it's household trash, green waste and manure. So on the, on the two sides of green waste and, and manure, there are ways that we can become more efficient. Just to give you an example of, on the green waste alone. It's not efficient to put big branches and what have you in a dumpster and expect to get the, the volume. Or the tonnage, uh, you know, that the dumpster would hold because you, you know, the tractor can only squash it down so much. If we had a chipper shredder, uh, on site. And you were able to chip and shred all that green waste, you can get, you know, the fifty tons or forty tons. Depending on what size the dumpster. I, I think we negotiated fifty ton dumpsters, but we're not always getting that. But we're still being charged for the same amount. So to monitor that and, and make sure that we can chip this green waste up and put. The proper tonnage in there, we would save money, uh, uh, overall, uh, you know, by reducing the number of dumpsters. And the same thing with, uh, you know, with the horse manure thing. So, um, we have some challenges to discuss and that's coming up soon. And one year from now, we, we as a board should be able to say we accomplished resolving those issues. And, you know, we're, you know, we're going forward. So I'm hoping that, uh, you know, that we would be able to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Roberts. Other thoughts? And Bill, you know, Bill, you, yeah, go right ahead.
So part of, uh, maybe how I'm, I'm viewing this is. You know, we're going to be getting into our, our budget process. We're looking at a. Capital improvement plan. Our strategic plan in my mind will. Be looking at a short, medium and long. We are perhaps a little more challenged, you know, long term. But in the next couple of years, we should be able to identify some of these projects. And I think the challenge is for us and for the board collectively to. Recognize what, what is realistic with the resources. And those resources are obviously the financial resources, but it's also the staffing, uh, human resource. To get those projects done. Some of them may be best to be contracted out as an example. And not rely on us to do it, but that we, we set our, our sites on. Just say a dozen of these items and we budget appropriately to get them done. And in fact, we get them done because I think that's going to be get the, the confidence of the residents. It's going to show it's getting done, kind of ties this process of prioritization. And, and budget of resources to, to be successful. And so, um, I guess I'd like to think a year from now, as we're sitting here. We will have seen that that process of tying these pieces together was successful. And in fact, you know, I, I will advocate that we do a survey every couple of years. That we think in two year increments gives us time to do the planning and budgeting separately. So that's where I'd like to see us maybe in twelve months to answer your question, Patrick. And that, I mean, there's a lot of things we, we kind of have on the horizon, but it's the reality check for us that says, okay. And it's kind of where I think Terry was going. Everything's, everything's high. And, and, you know, it takes some discipline for us all to go, okay. Let's make sure that, that we are successful on these things. And I think that's really important.
We've got all the departmental supervisors, uh, listening in on this. And the creation of the twenty twenty one projects. I'm assuming that these folks did a lot to create this list, not just. Well, well, here's your list coming down from Bill. A, a lot of the stuff will depend on those individuals getting stuff done. As Bill said, staffing and, um, resources, obviously, and commitment. The board can have all the commitment. We like to say we have, but the actual, um, getting things done is going to happen at street level, as it were. And, um, I, I would like some sort of, um. Agreement from Bill or, uh. That kind of ascent that, um, these projects are actually doable in a year, March twenty twenty two. If we got all these things done, personally, I'd be pleased as punch.
Right. Yeah, and let me, uh, I, I appreciate that. And I think that is our intent and our goal. I'm going to go to this bottom of, uh, the twenty twenty one projects where it says, you know, complete stormwater prevention plan. Okay, now part of, part of Bill and or maybe staff, uh, doesn't quite know what he doesn't know. So, um, you know, some of these things are going to have to be recognized, to be broken up into some pieces. The more we get into it, the more we can hopefully, uh, be specific about it. Because we, we sometimes don't know quite what the full extent of it will be to finalize a maintenance shop construction. Okay, you know, if we were to start from scratch, how long does that take us to, to plan and do all of the steps? To finally be able to cut a ribbon on a, um, building, you know, so. You know, a little of that gets into, I think, my experience would be to the extent we are more realistic. And, and then we have some patience along with it, um, the, the, the pieces get come together. I, I think we're, um, going through a process and having, as you indicated, Terry, a lot of expectations. That we're going to get this and this and this, and it, and it, it doesn't quite smack of reality. That's, that's where unfortunately, um, people begin to get dissatisfied. Because, because it's kind of viewed like a failure as opposed to the failure was the lack of, uh, reality, so to speak. On the expectations. So I, I hear you. Our intent will be to put schedules and dollars to these things. Because some of them are going to be multi-year as an example.
Sure.
Thanks, Phil. Other thoughts? You've talked about those major areas of focus that you're responsible for, infrastructure, including roads, waters, wastewater, solid waste. Have anything about police or public safety that you want to explore? You know, you've talked to me and then some last week, a little bit today about the gate, so to speak. That notion, and you've also talked about outreach, that whole notion of how to engage your residents. I'm just throwing those out there, making spaghetti here a little bit, see what sticks, if any of that resonates. If you want to have a deeper, broader discussion about if there's an area in particular you want to move, you want to move, move on.
With regards to the gate, I'd, I'd love to see a cost comparison. By contracting out with a, a private security company versus doing that ourselves. The gate is one of our biggest expenses and. Also a liability as well. I mean, if you can put that liability on another company that's insured and bonded. And get equal or better service for less, I'd, I'd love to see that.
Okay. Thanks, Director Jensen. Other thoughts about that?
I think one way to cut costs at the gate is to go towards a fully automated gate and not have it manned a lot. Or most of the time, or even all of the time. Technology exists right now that makes that fairly simple with some training. You mean, it would mean no more phone calls to the gate staff to call in a pass. It would, it would make it more automated. But that would be the ultimate savings is still, I, I actually, I don't know exactly what the personnel costs are as a percentage of the gate. But that's one way to, and I'm not trying to let any jobs, but we're also not a charity organization to offer, offer jobs, uh, just because.
And you make a great point, Mr. President. I mean, it, it, at the very least, uh, you know, maybe not having it. Manned from midnight to six in the morning, you know, I mean, that would certainly save you costs. I mean, I, I know that at one time was a recommendation of the grand jury years ago, uh, as to, uh, a cost saving measure for us.
Okay. Other thoughts about police or, uh, anything internal to the district operations?
Real quickly, and I, I approached this with the board last week, which was, and, and I think there was a comment of. Uh, in my materials today on the survey about DPAC. And Patrick, that is our disaster preparedness advisory council. And I mentioned to the board Thursday night that, um, I'm hopeful that one of the focuses could be on. Education, fire prevention, education, um, work on being better prepared. For a wildfire of a most significant level. Uh, and that really includes an evacuation plan. that, you know, is, is, I want to say flawless. I doubt that can happen, but the, the example of the Paradise Fire incident and how that went and improvements that could be made and applied here. I think would be a good one. And that kind of falls under the Police Department, Public Safety Committee and DPAC to kind of focus a little bit on that because the community conversations or expectations about emergency evacuation routes. That's probably another area where continued communications will be needed. Not just helpful because people will on social media say, what happened to our five emergency exits? They were there once, weren't they? And, and I can't answer those things, but, but we did go and assess them and they're not viable to be a way to get out of here in a big fire. And, and so that reality needs to be kind of shared with people. Because sometimes they, they believe that the CSD has let them down, that, that we failed to maintain all of those. I don't know that they were all viable at, at one given time or not. Today, at a point in time, they're not. So that becomes the reality, not what was failed to do somewhere in the last 50 years, but here we are today. And, you know, what does that mean for someone? It means, okay, here's how, here's how we, you take care of yourself and your family. If that were to happen and to be well organized for it, I think would be a really and this can, this probably going to take a while too. I think it would be really important and helpful just because it's such an still recent event. It was, you know, two years, two and a half years ago for the Paradise Fire and, you know, destroyed an entire city. And then it stuck with people. That's probably, I think, why maybe some of the fire education things got lower marks, but I'll be quiet. That goes under police.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Other thoughts, input? For Bill to consider as he kind of moves, moves forward with projects, objectives, details, specifics. Among others, I'm hoping that the board finds the benefit of convening with your colleagues on a couple of fronts. One, it's to exchange ideas and listen to people's perspectives about these items. To clarify, to better understand, to strengthen your ability as problem solvers. Because by the time things reach your level, there's a certain amount of dimensions to it that requires some unnodding of those threads. How you're going to govern? I think that's also important as an outcome of this situation, the device by which you're going to share those ideas and and work through it. One of the challenges we have, I think you've done a good job of this. Sometimes what I'm finding in a virtual environment, there's a lot of monologue, but not a lot of dialogue. So I'm hoping that you're finding that you get a chance to listen to your colleagues and share. I'm definitely trying to give you space to do that, build on each other's ideas. So it's not always the measure of the, the success of these gatherings is not always about the length of the list, as I've shared with you a few times. It's that you feel good about the direction, things are underway. You're moving forward. There's some clarity and cohesion, commitment by all of you to keep these items moving forward. Some sooner faster, so you can see results sooner. Others, there's some, you know, Bill has to do some, some work on to provide some of that more detail. That's the nature of these to bring that back to you. So you can consider it and say, yeah, we want to move sooner. Or we want to move slower. Sometimes it's also about pumping the brakes. Once you understand what it obligates you to. So there's, I hope that you're finding some dividends of this process beyond just the, the content of the conversation, but also how you're working through these issues.
I do find value in this format because we can't have these conversations in a regular board meeting. And that's the only time I get to see these guys.
Yeah. Yeah. As we talked about the benefit of this, thank you so much, President Han, was to talk about things you don't get a chance to talk about in a way you don't always get a chance to talk about them. Because board meetings are a little bit more routinized. What's next? What's next? You're voting, discussion, presentation, voting. This was a chance for you to just to kind of examine, look at it through different portals, through different lenses, some of these issues. So other input you want to share at this time for potential objectives? Speak now. I think you've done very well too, as a board to stay at the policy level. You've dipped your toe a little bit in operation. That's the nature of these, but I think the more you can stay at the policy, the macro, the what? And relying on Bill and the staff to focus on the how. With some description of some of that how, I think it's healthy. Because you're really having, trying to have, he's working on your behalf along with the staff to execute. And execution in some respects is the strategy. Right? It's good to have the focus, obviously, but execution is the strategy. My guess is your predecessors for years have talked about this and for a variety of reasons, who knows? I'm not armchair quarterbacking. Maybe there was just some hesitancy to move forward. Maybe they met with great, you know, resistance and it just seemed overwhelming. And so they just, we're going to delay that. Who knows? But there's there's a challenge and even in the best of times, trying to move some of these public policy items, because there's usually a price tag. As you've talked about with these, these infrastructure improvements and that, that's always a sometimes a tough conversation to have with people. It just is. There's, there's an old saying in government, a couple of them. One is, public policy is made by those who show up. So sometimes it's the squeaky wheel, the vocal people. The second one is roads, as soon as you open them, they're full. So you're always sort of planning. They also add to that prisons, but that's, that's not very fun. But as soon as you open them, they're full. And I think you're finding that with roads, they're also they're expensive. These items that you have is part, part of your portfolio. They're, they're expect expensive endeavors. They're enterprises. And so they're just, they're expensive propositions, sort of like your house. You know, you all are homeowners, you know, there's always something. You put money back to it. Some of it's cosmetic, some of it's functional. You just got to keep to be able to, a hot water heater goes out. You need a hot water heater. Nobody, it's not very sexy, but you have to have one. Then there's the decorative things. The cosmetic things. And you obviously are, have opportunity to do both. Some of it's the appearance, the sign regulations, the striping. That's also a safety precaution, as was mentioned. And then there's sort of the, the guts, the, the re-milling of the street, the looking at the water lines. Sometimes that's not always so visible. It's not always so appealing to people. So. Other thoughts for today? Again, the outcome of today is I've made notes. I know Bill has, Christie has put our notes together, flush out some of those more objectives, put some more depth to them, some more detail. He'll bring that back to you for your consideration at a future board meeting. So you can sort of see what, where the time and attention is going to be focused on to move those forward and possibly what your role will be to accelerate those, or at least to, to keep those moving forward. Bill, you have other thoughts you want to share with the board or any, any more input that you think would be helpful for you as you partner with your staff to?
No, just, you know, for our staff, as long as you're all there and, and we, we talk about this relative to our CIP. And so the board can hopefully see in the public as well that part of the value of that is to be able to look out farther than five years and/or 10 years and to get out 20 years. That now will become foundational. And it'll always change. Every year, things will, will probably crop up or we'll think of something that we hadn't the year before, because we'll be getting better at this. But, you know, we'll start putting together longer range budgets. And where I think this is important is as the board looks at what kinds of projects we want to do. Or as Patrick kind of talked about, what do we have to do? Because some of those things happen. A new roof is a have to do, not a, that sure would be nice. So some of those things we need to be prepared for because we hopefully will be projecting a realistic life cycle for an asset. And that could be rolling stock equipment. It could be vehicles. It could be roofs and HVACs and furnishings and equipments and motors and pumps and all of that. So part of, part of what will be churning out, and again, maybe it's easy to talk about some of the challenges will be, you know, pricing out that 50 horsepower motor that was from 1972 and now it's replacements and so on. It will, it will unfortunately exceed our resources. At the end of the day, I'm just speculating, but I, I think it's going to be fair to say, part of what hopefully we can do is use these tools to help educate our residents and our stakeholders and our citizens that these are not nice to haves. These are things we have to have. And the more and the better job we do at projecting out and identifying those costs, the better prepared we can be, you know, whether it's with saving money or generating money to do what has to be done. So I'm, it's one of the reasons I'm, I'm really up on doing a longer range CIP and a longer range cash flow projection for all of our funds. So we can have these planning tools. I'm, I'm hopeful that when we have to go back for a rate adjustment, that these things help instill greater confidence on behalf of the citizens and, and show them, you know, it's kind of the old Missouri thing, you know, the show me state here, here's the numbers, here's the, the way it works out. We're not we're not able to redesign the water system. We have to kind of keep replacing the parts of the water system as an example. So so for all of our division supervisors and department heads, we've got your 2021, be thinking the next couple of years out. So for starters, we can bring to the board some of those things, not only that we hope to get accomplished in this current, but then the next budget year and the next budget year after that. Okay? And then we'll, we'll be able to triage that information and, and prioritize it, given what we do have for resources. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Something I just wanted to share with you as we start to wrap up. Director Quinn mentioned this earlier about Kaizen, Japanese for continuous improvement. I added to that, that meharando, Spanish, it means getting better all the time. So it's just a different, different approach, but sort of the same mindset. I would offer to you, and I think you've touched on these in a roundabout way, but this might be helpful just to crystallize some of your thinking. There's actually three types of change, because that's really what we're talking about here is change. That's sort of the backdrop here. There's continuous improvement, as Director Quinn would say, which is sort of refinement, little polish. There's renovation, which is a little bit more significant, requires a little bit more lifting, if you will. And then there's reinvention, which is the most significant, probably the most dramatic. I would offer that to you just as an assessment device, as you look at what you're doing as policymakers and on, on for the staff as well. You inherited, there's different aspects you all inherited. Sometimes what differentiates organizations that are able to make sustainable progress is that they're very selective and discerning about what's required. It's not the peanut butter approach, one size fits all, and they spread it out to everything. I think that sometimes creates unnecessary drama with the public, like, oh my gosh, you know, the sky is falling. And I know you're not saying any of that. I'm just offering that to you as you look at the water and wastewater system. Maybe it's a particular type. You've talked a lot about that. That's to me, it seems as though, and the roads, that's reinvention. That's significant reinvestment in the entire structure of the, of those systems, the spine, as well as the, all the, the different aspects. Other, other dimensions that you've talked about, maybe it's more of a continuous improvement. You've made progress. It's not too dramatically. And it, it's not at a stage where you think it needs, oh my gosh, it needs some refinement, a little polish to move it forward. Then there's renovation, which is sort of the middle ground. That maybe you're just not feeling right as a board, that it's not firing in all cylinders. Maybe as you partner with Bill and the staff to say, we're not exactly there. But we need some improvement, but we don't need a wholesale improvement. But it's got to be more than just looking at the edges. So I'm just sharing that with you as a way to, for your critical thinking and problem solving skills, as you analyze these issues in your portfolio, trying to use at least three different dimensions. There's probably more, but I'm just sharing those with you to be discerning in how you approach that and evaluate that, because I have this saying in my practice that problems define solutions. But sometimes we're so busy chasing the solution, we don't even know the nature and the complexity of the problem. And we overwhelm people or we, we do too much of something. So I'm just offering that to you as a problem solver, because that's really what public policy is about. You're trying to solve problems that people otherwise couldn't provide for themselves to create a social good. If you're selective and discerning in your evaluation of the issues, then I think when you're bringing them through that, and I'm simplifying this simply for just the purpose of describing it, rarely do things land perfectly in one of those categories. But if you're able to arrive at, as a policymaking board and partnering with Bill about what the nature of those issues are, then you arrive with those solutions that you think are more compatible. And to Bill's point, I think it makes an easier sellout to the residents. You've seen it. This is the issues. These are the complexity. These are the solutions we're applying to that. And now you start marketing that message to them about how you're going to address those issues in the short term, long term. So I hope that helps just in your approach as policymakers, that it's another thing you can pull from in your leadership playbook as you evaluate those issues in front of you. And I do really think it's important for the five of you to have the equivalent of a leadership playbook in your role as policymakers. Sort of your folder, if you will, or a binder, whatever information you're putting in there that you're drawing inspiration from. Maybe you're drawing some guidance from, maybe it's things of passages that mean a lot to you in your role. Maybe it's information you've gone through from CCA, CSDA orientation, maybe it's information that you've come across. Just, you know, it's good to have that leadership playbook that you're drawing from. Because I think that's helps you in analyzing and feeling inspired and replenished in the impact you're having. So I hope that you receive that in the spirit that I give it. Because this, your role for the five of you, it can be exhausting. It can feel frustrating. And you want to make sure that you don't burn out, that this is replenishing. And so whether that's the five of you just feeling good about the process we had last week and today, that you had a good conversation with your colleagues. Whether that you feel as though you knocked a few really significant things out and you're moving the community forward. But you've got to be able to find replenishment in decisions you make and the, the company with what you share with your colleagues, along with Bill and staff members. So or else, or else it's, you know, what's the point? You'll, 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 you'll find, you'll be exhausted. You got to be around people that are going to fuel you up, not just drain you. Especially right now, it's important, I think, for all of us. So again, I hope you receive that in the spirit that that I offered that to you. So what we're going to go from here is I took notes. I know Bill did, Christie did. And others will compare our notes, put together sort of this tentative list of objectives going forward. Ask Bill to provide some more details to that, partnering with his staff and bring that back to you for your consideration, adoption and implementation. And then I think to President Han's point, which is a really good point, I think it's also having something in front of you periodically to chart progress. Where are you with this? What's it going to involve? How's that getting knocked out? Just that, kind of that monitoring device, if you will, just to create that sense of transparency, accountability and that sense that you have a, that, that awareness that you have that sense of progress is being made. I think that helps you all, especially in your conversations with each other and with residents. Yeah, we're making progress. You brought that up. Yeah, look at this. This is what we're doing. We're making progress. Some of this is, uh, it's just a little bit, the devil's in the details. So.
Let me just chime in on that a little bit because my experience, in particularly with CIPs. So as, as we look at what road's going to get fixed here or what thing is going to get done there. And things always crop up. And earlier I've mentioned about resources, you know, the dollars and the cents and the human component. And things will crop up and they'll be brought to us, to you to go fix. And for whoever's bringing it, it's really important. Because in, as you develop these systems, you get to bounce it off of that, meaning if somebody's got a really hot item comes up, it's really important for them. You've already made the work schedule for the year. And if it is so important, then we can go about altering that work schedule, not just adding it on, because you, you can keep doing that. And then you, you get into the situation where we're not getting all the things done. That leads to some disappointment and sense of failure when, you know, in reality, we didn't have the resources to get it all done. So if it is in fact, an emergent issue that you want to fix, that's fine. My approach would be, here's your list of to-dos that we have. And maybe it's a simple, the thing on the bottom falls off. But we, we got to match some of those. But we, we got to match some of those things up. So I, I find that having the plans and the CIP actually helps us. Sometimes it's a matter of, yes, your road isn't on the list for this year, but it's on for next year. We already looked at it, and there it is. And people go, oh, okay, thank you, right? And at least they, they know that we've thought about it, and we have those answers. But if, if that's not the case, then, then we need to kind of figure out how to address it, and then what things don't get done as a result of that, because we didn't see that one coming.
So I would just add to that real quickly, that, you know, as we started last week, this process was to help you to strengthen your muscles on being both responsive and proactive. And we toggled back and forth as the nature of these sessions involve developing your muscles. You've got to be responsive, to be a credible community builder, and being proactive, I think is also part of that ecosystem, and you're trying to project out. And I think as you saw this process unfold, you were talking about things right in front of you, you're talking about things further down the road, and building those muscles and understanding that. And that's a skill set I would offer to you, it's also a mindset, but it's a skill set that sometimes people don't possess, they just focus on the here and now. It's almost like a reflex, which the unintended consequence is, they, they're not practicing being proactive. And then those issues just bubble up and bubble up and bubble up, and before they know it, it's a real problem. So, final thoughts as we wrap up the session, just reactions, responses, thoughts, comments from, from board members? How are you feeling about where you are as a result of this process? What you, what you liked about the process? Maybe what you, what wish we would have been able to do more of, so we can think about that for the next time?
Well, just wanted to, you think all the board members for their comments, everybody had great comments. And, and some of them were thinking outside the box, which I really appreciate. So, you know, I just want to thank the board for, you know, their activity.
Thanks, Vice President Roberts. I would also build on that and say, sometimes you got to think outside the building, not just outside the box.
True.
Just a little play on words there. Other thoughts from board members?
Patrick, I would just say thank you. This has been a good process. I'm actually optimistic about where we're going, and, and it can be a daunting, a daunting proposition, everything that we've got in front of us to make the, to rebuild the community, but I think this has helped to, to focus and itemize and prioritize, which are always the, some of the toughest things to do. So a lot of work ahead in terms of of laying out these various roadmaps and plans, but like I say, I'm optimistic of where we're going, and I, I think this was very valuable.
Great. Thanks, Director Grace, for your feedback. Other thoughts as we wrap up? Okay. Well, I want to say thank you for the opportunity. Bill and I have talked about this going back several months. We were trying to make sure the process was productive, not necessarily efficient, to help just strengthen the group's ability to govern more effectively, building on that, capitalizing on your strengths, and obviously look at some of these content, these topics to help move the, kind of move the needle, if you will. Sometimes it's incremental, sometimes it's rapid. The outcome, though, is to make sure there's focus and a shared commitment that you're trying to make progress. So I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate your indulgence on this, your willingness to sort of navigate this and work with me, and I just feel fortunate that I had an opportunity in the spirit of Mejerrando to help the, the board, the staff, really the community in my role, just to help it can keep moving forward and get better all the time. So I'll hand it back over to Bill, maybe Bill, if you want to share something, and then we can wrap up.
Thank you, Patrick, and I'll echo the, the comments. Appreciate you helping to, to guide us, and that is the the role of a facilitator and an outside perspective to help all of us. I think the, the last item, you know, next steps, you hit on it, I just wanted to try to lay out a timeline. I honestly wouldn't expect us to get to the board at your April meeting. Hopefully the May meeting, we can be fleshing this out. We're also going through the budget process, so it's probably going to get kind of intermingled with that a little bit. And, and maybe, you know, kind of finalized as a budget, if you will, because that, that really, that time is going to fly. We've, we've looked at our schedule for the budget and, and it's, it's going to be on us. Well, for staff, it's already upon us. We'll be having our first public discussions of it here in the next month or so, so. Unless the board had other expectations about it, what's on the list here? I think we need to be a little more specific for the time remaining this fiscal year, and what of this will continue out into the next fiscal year. And then do some prioritizing ourselves. And then there's the other things that aren't on here yet, like the GIS effort that Don will be making and so on. So we've got some work to add to what you've seen already, I think, just based on some of our discussions here. So hopefully get something in the next 45 to 60 days, at least some, something on a prologue. That was it.
All right. So I think it's my turn to work towards enjoyment. I'd like to send a special thank you to the six members of the public who have hung in there through this meeting. Email me your feedback if you have some, or any of the board members or staff, appreciate that. Thank you, Patrick, for helping facilitate this. And thanks everyone for your hard work and dedication to the advancement and the success of this wonderful community called Bear Valley Springs. If there are no objections, I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
Right on. I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.